Joining us, let us call this meeting into order. The Chair will do a roll call to confirm quorum. Let's start with Trustee Kane.
Trustee Kane.
Trustee Stoma.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Trustee Good.
Here.
Trustee vote. That President, Trustee Maria.
Present and present.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Sullivan.
Present.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Pierce.
Present.
Thank you, ma'am. Trustee Wilson.
I'm present.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. So we do have quorum. Next, who would like to do the Pledge of Allegiance? Do you have any volunteers? All right, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance, everybody. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. Thank you, colleagues. Dr. Head, do we have the proper meeting posted?
Yes, I certify it was posted in accordance with the law.
Perfect, thank you, sir. We don't have any closed session today. Helen, do we have any public comment?
Yes, Chair Salvidar, we have two people today. The first is Don Colburn.
Okay, thank you.
John, you've been moved up to the board.
Am I ready to go? Should I start?
Yes, sir.
All right. Good afternoon, and thank you very, very much for having us in your meeting today to be able to speak to the entire board. My name is John Colburn, and I'm here to discuss why using solar should be a must for your facilities. Solar energy can be a viable source of power for Lone Star Colleges. Schools and universities across Texas, in fact, across the nation are installing solar to help with budget shortfalls. Solar will create additional monies and funds for student services, staff raises, and even building improvements. The savings in solar have far-reaching effects into the future. The following Texas schools have installed solar. Bridgeport Independent School District, Carroll Independent School District, Coppell Independent School District, Irving Independent School District, Monday Council Consolidated Independent School District, sorry, little nervous here, Pasadena Independent School District, and Presidio Independent School District. In addition, colleges and universities across the country are installing solar. Northwest University, Drexel University, University of Arizona, Butte College, University of Buffalo, Colorado State University, Princeton University, University of Tennessee, University of Utah, Santa Clara University, or just a few. In addition, businesses adopting it worldwide. Walmart added 6.5 megawatts of rooftop and canopy parking solar to California stores. Additionally, Target, Apple, Ford, IKEA, and thousands of others are adopting solar as a must-needed addition to our grid energy. CBS News reported recently about a small school district in Bakersville, Arkansas, that actually installed solar, and the savings allowed the district to give teachers raises up to $15,000 per year. Before they added the solar, they had trouble retaining teachers because the pay was low and not comparable by the standards of the industry today. Now teacher retention is at an all-time high, and it's a real success story. The biggest problem we have is grid stability today because NRG is incapable to actually produce the energy necessary, even though they're growing by leaps and bounds. The additional population and wear on the utility, wear and tear on the utility of a 100-year-old system just doesn't create an opportunity for reliable service. As a result, adding solar can not only improve what you're doing, but will also improve everybody else's consistency of electrical use, especially during the day. The Houston Chronicle reports on this. ERCOT warnings over the last 10 years every summer is additional awareness of what we're dealing with on a day-to-day basis, especially in the summer. But even more recently, this last month, we actually had notices from ERCOT warning us of low electrical availability. And of course, we all know what happened two months ago when we had the deep freeze that hit Texas in a lifetime opportunity that's never happened before. And we lost, we took the grid down completely because we just didn't have enough supply. We hope and encourage the responsibility. We know that you guys are educating people to the greenness that solar offers and the potential that it does. But going one step further and adding it to your colleges is the next step. NASA says that one hour of sunlight that strikes the planet Earth will produce enough energy to power the entire Earth's needs for a year. And God knows we have a ton of sunlight left. NASA says we have 800 million years of sunlight. Do we really have that much fossil fuel energy? Shouldn't we conserve those dwindling resource and make sure that we use the best advantage that we can for fossil fuels? God gave us sunlight. We're just realizing how important it is on a day-to-day basis. I know you know that there's air pollution with the current creation of electrical energy via fossil fuels, but there's also water pollution because the creation of steam to power the generators creates another 22 gallons of, I'm sorry, polluted water that has to be refined in order to be returned to use. So we need to preserve those remaining fossil fuel inventories. We need to reduce, we all know that, we need to reduce the oxides and the pollutants that we put in the atmosphere in the water. So please, Lone Star Board of Trustees, please consider a future date for a workshop meeting where we can go into more depth and provide more information and give you a well-rounded idea of what the benefits are by going solar. We're here to answer any of the questions and address any concerns you might have. And we can provide a turnkey system for monitoring to as much as you want to do. It's all up to you guys, but we're ready to go. My name again is John Colburn, and you can reach me at 713-261-0399 or by email, I hope you wrote my number down, john.colburn@sunrenergy.com. Thank you again for having us this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Colburn, thank you so much. Staff, if you could, administration staff, if you could follow up with Mr. Colburn, I would really appreciate it. Thank you. Helen, do we have a?
Yes, John Bergduff will speak next.
Okay, John, you're now panelist and can present to the board.
Okay, thank you very much. I am Dr. John Bergduff, President of AFT Lone Star College, and thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you again today. This afternoon, I'd like to speak in favor of Action Item Number Four on this month's agenda. I understand that the discussion on this item may be extended to June, but I will go ahead and share the union's perspective today anyway for your consideration over this next month. This Agenda Item, if approved by the Board of Trustees, would authorize the Chancellor or his designee to adopt prevailing wage rates for contractors and subcontractors on college construction projects in accordance with U.S. Department of Labor prevailing wage rates through August of 2022. The Labor Department, in accordance with the Davis Bacon Act of 1931, routinely surveys wages paid for every construction craft in every geographical area across the country. Using the results of these surveys, the Labor Department identifies prevailing wages for each of those crafts, unique to each geographical area. Federal construction contracts in excess of $2,000 must include stipulations that workers on these projects will be paid at least the prevailing wages established in accordance with this law. Under Action Item Four, Lone Star College would adopt the same prevailing wages for our construction projects that are set by Davis Bacon for federal contracts. The reasons for supporting Action Item Four are many. First of all, because the Labor Department surveys local areas, the prevailing wages that they set are relevant to those areas. If the Board adopts this resolution, wages for craft workers on Lone Star College construction projects will be competitive with wages for similar projects across the Houston area. These wage rates will be reflective of market realities here in Houston rather than state or national averages that factor in realities in other very different markets. Workers on these contracts can be assured that they are being paid consistently and fairly compared to other workers performing similar jobs across our area. Davis Bacon further mandates that contractors pay health insurance coverage and some retirement benefits to their workers. Adopting these prevailing wages guarantees similar dignity for construction workers on our campuses to what we believe our own employees deserve. Besides bringing benefits to workers, adopting Labor Department prevailing wage rates benefit the college as well. Adopting Davis Bacon wage rates encourages the use of Department of Labor Registered Apprenticeship Programs by contractors and subcontractors. This ensures that construction workers on college projects are well-trained and qualified and that a steady stream of new construction workers are being prepared for good lifetime careers in the construction trades. As an institution of higher learning, it makes sense for Lone Star College to support apprenticeship programs that are known for their quality on-the-job training and student-worker preparation. As noted under Agenda Item Four, adopting Department of Labor Davis Bacon prevailing wages imposes no fiscal impact on Lone Star College while assuring fair wages and benefits for workers and quality workmanship for us. This Agenda Item is a win for all concerned, and the union heartily endorses its passage at whatever point we are able to discuss it. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, John. Helen, do we have anyone else?
We do not, that's it for today.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next item is the Introductions of Special Guest Recognizations. Do we have any special guest recognitions?
We have a couple of them. So I want to, this has been an unusual year, as everybody knows. So we've not been able to meet in person with the faculty senate presidents, but we have three that are, their terms are ending. So I want to make sure that I recognize them and then introduce the new faculty senate presidents. So number one is Fay Lee, who is the faculty senate president at SciFair. And you're going to hear more from Fay in a few minutes. The next one is Chris Hinosa from Houston North. And then the last is Jano Houston from LSC Montgomery. So I want to thank all of them. You know, we have a close working relationship with the faculty senate presidents, and they've been very helpful in discussing items and bringing up issues. And they're just important to our overall governance structure. And let me introduce the new faculty senate presidents. One is, or the first is from SciFair, Sandra Harvey, who's Professor of History from Houston North, Brandy Ford, who is Professor of English. And then from Montgomery is Chase Waits, who is Professor of Drama. So I want to thank all of the new faculty senate presidents, and hopefully we'll be meeting. I don't know when we're in person, we've been meeting on Zoom. And for the board, we're going to have some more discussions about when we might be getting back together again. But I do want to thank all the faculty senate presidents. I think that it's really important that we hear from them and engage them and we listen to everybody, so. So Helen, I think that's it for the introductions, right?
Yes, Dr. Keshvala will do the next one.
Okay, so let me just briefly. This is, normally, we spend a lot of time on budget and finance, and that's what we've been doing, trying to get through the pandemic. But we have a, I think, a really good board meeting this time because we're recognizing not only the individuals that make our system go, but we're recognizing students and some of the awards and honors that our students and employees have been receiving. So I've asked Dr. Keshvala to share with you what happened over at SciFair and how now so you said. So Sopa, I'll turn this over to you.
Yes, thank you, Chancellor. Good afternoon to you and good afternoon, Board of Trustees. And again, Chancellor, I want to thank you for the opportunity to share this very special video message that was made for our students by NASA astronaut Victor Glover from aboard the International Space Station. But before we show the video, I wanted, of course, to provide some context in the background to set it up first. So since 2015, our students here at Lone Star College SciFair have been participating in various NASA Design Challenge programs, and they have consistently won top awards and competed against primarily four-year universities. And over the years, they have won upwards of $57,000 in the form of scholarships as part of prize money that they've received. And so I wanted to highlight two specific examples, student successes that have come about as this growing relationship with NASA because they're really quite remarkable. So one of our student teams, Team Cero, made history when their award-winning design, which is a very sophisticated zip-tie cutter tool, was actually selected and used by NASA astronauts during a spacewalk in 2019 to repair what's called the Alpha Magnetic Spectrometer. So absolutely incredible. And I did want to take a moment, if I may, to recognize these students. And the board may remember because we had shared this right when they were about to, when they were making strides with getting selected in the various competitions. But Maria Gonzalez is part of Team Cero, Francesca Liso, Sean Palmer, Jim Philippi, and Daniel Vasek. So what, very proud of our students there. And then I also wanted to highlight another team of ours. This team competed the subsequent year, Team Cero, and they created an award-winning design for a dust-tolerant pivoting mechanism for which Lone Star College filed a patent in fall of 2020. Again, huge congratulations to these students and all of their hard work and efforts, whom I do want to recognize, Robert Klow, Edgar Flores, Carrie Meadows, Xavier Shakni, Umberto Leo, and Daniel McGee. And of course, our students wouldn't be able to have these sort of experiences if it weren't for the leadership of our dedicated faculty and our administration. So I want to give a very sincere heartfelt public thank you to Professors Jared Cameron and Dr. Yihong Wong, Esther Robinson, who serves as the Director of our Honors College, and Dr. Claire Phillips, who's the Dean of Sciences, who's also serving as interim Vice President of Instruction. So with that, I'm going to turn it back to Link, if he can play the video.
Before I begin the video, I want to point out one thing as you're looking at it. At the very bottom of your screen, you can expand the video to make it larger. I can't control what you see, so if you go to the bottom of the screen, you can expand it. Enjoy.
Thank you, Link.
Wow, this is really awesome.
Yeah, thank you, Sopa. Just so everybody knows that the astronaut that just spoke landed safely a couple of days ago in the Gulf of Mexico. He's part of the SpaceX Dragon, right, that landed in the, they had that night landing. I just, I think the whole thing is amazing, and it's a tribute to our students and our faculty, and it's pretty cool, I have to say, so.
Congratulations to all the faculty and staff and the students as well. That's really awesome.
Hopefully, and again, whenever we start meeting again, we'll have these students come in and the faculty so we can properly recognize them. Helen, let's go to the next.
Adam Chair, before we go to the next item, I can ask a question, this is Mike Sullivan.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you. With respect to the competitions that those students participated in, are those part of the course curriculum? Or is it course curriculum and/or extra time that these students are devoting to their efforts?
Yeah, it's extracurricular. It's obviously related to the core curriculum, but it's ancillary. So it's a lot of extra work and time on the, and effort from the students to participate in these and to engage.
Okay, so other than recognition they get from the competition, do they get any academic recognition?
Oh, yeah, I'm sure the instructors incorporated, as I'm sure, part of projects, et cetera, to help me meet course outcomes. But I don't know that, I don't know the details of that. If you want that, so, Trustee Sullivan, I can get that to you. But I'm sure the answer to that is yes, because it's all related to their courses and pre-engineering and in the sciences.
Outstanding, great example of student success, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. It's, I look forward to meeting the students whenever we go back to in-person meetings. Think that would be really nice. And also, congratulations to all the faculty presidents. Thank you so much. All right. Our next item, oh, go ahead.
All right, we do not have a workshop today.
Our next item is the approval of minutes for April 1st, 2021. Hope all trustees were able to review those. Let's see.
I have, I'm sorry, this is Trustee Ayers Wilson. I'm sorry.
Need a motion before discussion, I believe.
Okay, can we get a motion for discussion?
May I have a motion in a second?
Yes, motion, Sullivan.
And this?
All right. Yes?
Okay, so as a secretary, I have to sign off on these agendas, and so I review them. And on the suggested future agenda items, the conversation that was had between Trustee Pierce and Trustee Good is not listed in here. Where Trustee Good called for point of order. And I think as much accuracy as possible needs to be done. So if we can get that revised and add that conversation so we can make sure everything, all of our bases are covered, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Wilson. We'll go ahead and make those changes. Regarding the minute, may I have a motion in a second to approve the minutes?
You have them already.
Got a motion in a second, so you don't need, you can go ahead and vote.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Motion passes. Thank you so much for the reminder. Any special reports or announcements?
Yes, so Helen, if you could get into the, or Link, the next slide, please. So I have a couple of quick, quick updates and comments to make. One is, just, I want to make clear that we are bringing back the, we did clear out item number four. We need to add some language, so we're in favor of that amendment, that board agenda item. We'll bring that back on the next, and thank you, John. So we've been talking to John quite a bit about different issues. I did want to point that out, John Bergduff with the AFT. So a couple of, a couple of items here. On the budget, we'll have a better update in late May when we have the board retreat. But we're beginning to get all the pieces together for our budget. And I think, again, when we meet, I believe, on May the 21st for a budget retreat, we will have the accurate information. I'm still waiting on the state appropriations. I'm just not quite sure yet. And I'll hit a few items there, exactly where we are with that. But I think we have a ballpark figure that we can work with. On the enrollment piece, so we finished the spring. We were slightly up about a half a percentage point, which was, again, put us on the plus side for that. We were down in contact hours, credit hours, which impacts our budgets, that's tuition and fees. So for the summer right now, we're still, I don't know, 30-something days out. We're up over almost 12% for the summer in headcount, which is a good sign. And then in credit hours, which is our money, we're up 7.5%. That's still a good sign. This time last year, you remember, we were down. We were down in almost 30 or 35% this time, maybe 40% this time last year. In the fall of, we've already started registering for the fall, but we're a long way out over this. So we're up 17% in headcount, which is good, and 9, 9 and 1/2 in credit hours. So we're trending in the right directions. We still, not every, not every college is performing at the level we'd like to in terms of, they're not trending in the right direction yet, but we're still early. It's really early for the fall, so we'll keep you informed, and we'll have more updates on that. On the Texas legislative.
Real question, Dr. Head, real quick. On the enrollment, is it both hybrid, both in-person or online?
I don't have them broken down in front of you, but that's just a accumulation of everything. I can get those for you, though, and break those down. Most of our classes right now, we're planning on, well, it'd be online or hybrid. So let me, I'll break those down and get those for you.
Thank you, sir.
So in the enrollment, I mean, in the legislative update, again, I mentioned the House and the Senate proposals, the way they are right now, basically were flat for the coming year. We're basically flat now. There's some caveats to that. We're actually down about $500,000 a year in regular appropriations. Then they're going to put another $500,000 in workforce programs, which we're in favor of. So I think we're going to end up in our, in operating budget about the same from the state. There's still discussions going on between the House and the Senate. But I feel pretty good about where we are, considering that the early proposals had us losing money. So, and you all have seen that the state budget is looking better every day. Now they're projecting a surplus. So I'm not as concerned about that as I was. And on the national update, I just want to spend just a minute talking to you about what some of the, what some of the recent proposals mean for us, potentially. So this is the. So this is the American Families Plan being proposed by the President Biden and the administration. Been in a number of meetings over this, over what they're, what they're intending to do and without, let me just tell you the, the basics of this and how it impacts us. Number one, they want to add fourteen hundred dollars to the basic Pell, which I, I, I think would be helpful to us. All these programs would be helpful to us if they go through. Now, politics aside. So right now, the maximum Pell grant is about sixty, sixty-three hundred or so. They're adding fourteen hundred dollars to the Pell. That's the proposal. And there's a long way to go before this. So that would move that up to eighty, eighty-two hundred or something like that. Which pays, basically pays for students with high need. It pays for tuition, fees, books, and supplies. What it doesn't cover necessarily, we have a lot of students that have transportation costs and miscellaneous. It just depends on whether you're living at home or not living at home. And the, the long-term proposal, the thinking of the current administration is to double Pell, which means that we would go, if, if that occurs, that would increase the number of Pell students that we have dramatically, I think. And it would, it would provide them enough money to pay for tuition, fees, books, room, board, not room and board, but miscellaneous expenses. So it will cover most of their expenses. And this has to do with the notion of the free college, by the way, and I'm going to talk about that in just a minute. There's also another part of this plan, and it's a huge plan, as you know. And that provides grants for, just generally what they're calling innovative programs. Diversity, put money into hiring efforts, to technology, to wraparound services, pretty much what we do at a number of our institutions. I'll use Houston North as a really good example of what we're trying to do for wraparound services. So that's a separate pot of money within this American Families Plan. It also gives aid to Dreamers, which I think we have, I believe we have about twenty-six hundred DACA students. And so I've been asked this question a lot about what about free tuition and a free community college? It's not exactly the way it appears. So the proposal right now is that the federal government would put up for every three dollars they put up, the states would match it with one. But the states have to match it. They have to buy in to the, the notion of free tuition. And in our conversations with the administration, they know that there's going to be some resistance from some states over that. Now, I've got some other meetings with state officials to see what that actually means for them and see if the state gives us about six million. Well, we, it's our money, Texas Public Education Grant. My question to them is, can we use our own grants that we would have and use that as matching dollars? In other words, if we already had money in the budget for a financial aid, if you have six million, does that mean that the state would put up, or the federal government would allow us up to eighteen million and let us use our six million that we already use? And that's a, I'll keep informed over that because the, the administration in Washington, the Department of Ed is open to discussions about this, because they want as many people to qualify for this. There's a long way to go in these discussions, a long way to go. And, and it's, aside from the political issues, it's a financial issue. So I'll keep you informed over that. And the, the discussions about what they're trying to do, though, for our students is it, it's, it's helpful to hear and hear them exactly what they're, what they're trying to do. And what they're trying to do is make education more accessible for middle-class and lower, lower-income families and give everybody the opportunity to have an education. So it fits in with our, our general purpose. On the stimulus money, here, here's where we are right now. We have provided, we have made thirty-four thousand grants to students on the stimulus money. We have given out thirty-two million so far, thirty-two million. We have another hundred and thirty or forty million to go through this year, through twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three. So, and, and they're talking about extending it until the end of twenty-twenty-four. So we have a plan where we lay out how much money we want to provide each semester to the students to make sure that we've got money all the way through till we get out of COVID. In addition to that, there is some overlap. We've given out thirty thousand Pell grants this past year, thirty thousand, thirty thousand students have been helped. And we've given out in just pure aid, a hundred million in federal and state money, a hundred million. Then there's, students have taken another seventy million in loans, which we're trying to, we do not want students to take out loans unless they have to. So we're going to be working on the marketing piece of that to make sure that students don't need to take out the loans. We don't want to take out the loans unless they just absolutely have to. So that's that. So let's go to student recognition. Helen, if we can go, or link, let's go to the next slide. Again, I told you, this is a, you know, when we're preparing for the board, a lot of it's their operational issues. But this is the upbeat, this is what we're missing, by the way, with not having students and faculty come into the board meetings. And our students, this, you know, our, our faculty and our staff are continuing to do great work behind the scenes in the middle of, middle of COVID. So we've got all these recognitions coming up, that, coming up on the slides here that you can see. So Phi Theta Kappa, Phi Theta Kappa, I know some of you have been active with Phi Theta Kappa. This is one of our premier honor societies, and you can see how many awards that we receive from different, different campuses. Let's go, the, I mean, these are great honors. This All Academic USA academic team, that's a very elite group of students. They all are. Anybody on PTK is some of our high-performing students. Jack Kent Cooke. I'm always proud of what we do here. This is national recognition. Every year, we, we are one of the leading community colleges in the entire country in the number of students that we have that are being recognized and receive money from the Jack Kent Cooke. We've been ranked near the top, either the top or near the top, for the last four or five years over this. And thanks to Katie Caruso for heading this up. Among the United Nations, by the way, we've been participating in this, and it's a combination of Katie Caruso, Peggy Lang. We have people at every campus. And I'm not recognizing, I'm not recognizing everybody because I don't have the names up in front of me. But all of our colleges participate in this. And this is where our students actually take, take positions. They're given a position and they have to argue whatever, whatever the issue is, as they would in the United Nations. And I think it's a great experience. Normally, if we were traveling, we would have students going to New York, which in itself is an experience. And the reason we do this and we encourage our students to do this, I mean, I wish somebody would have done this when I was in college, right? We give them experiences that they would never have. It gives them. So for some of our students, they've never flown before. They've certainly never been to New York. And then they get to engage students from across the country. And I just think it's a much higher level. I think every student that participates in this and our faculty and staff that go with them, come back. It's kind of like study abroad. Once you've done that, it, it, it just makes you a better person, you're better rounded, you have more confidence, and that's, that's why we're here. So, next slide. Some of the others that you may not be aware of, but we're involved with a lot of different organizations. And again, most of this is coming from, there's a certain system of people involved, but it's just coming from the colleges. And, and grants that we have, partnerships and grants that we have, and the relationships that we have. Next slide. It's just, next slide. We'd be glad to give you whatever you, whatever you want. We'll, we'll make sure you see this, just so that you're aware of everything that's going on behind the scenes. My, my point is, life is going on. Again, I, I just forget sometimes, I don't forget. But I think we've been so focused on making sure that we got through this and taking care of our employees and working with businesses and just moving in the right direction over this, especially with the legislature and, and all the dealings we've had with COVID. That this is a nice reminder of why we're here. Looking at that video of NASA, and then you look at these awards. And then you look at these commencement exercises. We put this up here. I think everyone's been notified. I know a number of you contributed to the, to the videos that we've had, but we've got, we've got a number of commencement exercises. This is the one I think is really, such just amazing to me. So you can see that we had a five percent increase over last year. And that's been a pattern that we've seen is our students are hanging with us. And we'll look more in the fall, but keep in mind that across the nation, okay, so we grew a little bit in the spring. Across the state, I saw a report last week that the average is between eight and ten percent decline, eight and ten percent decline, especially hitting minority students. That did not occur with us. It did not occur with us. So the success rates were higher, A, B, and C, and the retention rates were higher this past year. This is, which is, again, it's attributed primarily to the faculty who, and, and really to the staff also, they're sticking with these students and staying in touch with these students. But I'm really pleased over the number of graduates. So I think that concludes my, is that it, Helen? Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
I just want to congratulate the students and everyone who's graduating this year. Thank you to the faculty and staff. This is, it's really awesome to see how we're doing really good. So thank you.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, could I ask a question, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Head, for those trustees who might not be as familiar with the Jack Kent Cooke scholarship, can you describe to them quickly what that means to a student who actually wins a scholarship? I think it's something like thirty, thirty thousand, is it?
It's something like forty thousand a year. This is a life-changing scholarship. It is a life-changing scholarship for our students. If you, that means that students can pretty well go to whatever college they choose to go to. We'll come back. We have some updates over that, that we were just not ready yet, because it has, we, we operate under, when they give us these names, they give us information and, and tell us to embargo the information. So we will, we have about five of our students that have moved up into the, I think, I saw the note earlier this week. I think they're in the finalist category. But even if you're not a finalist, even once you get into that, you're guaranteed some money, a lot of money. These are, these are very, very special awards that very few students receive, by the way. I will get you the exact numbers. I'll tell you when, in the next board meeting, I'll come back and just tell you what Jack Kent Cooke looks like. And how many of our students over the last couple of years have received this. It's a great honor for Lone Star. I, I think, more importantly, it's a great honor for our faculty. Again, and I keep saying this, because they're the ones that are working with these students, not only in the academic side, but to help them prepare for their application and all this. It's, it's not, I think most of you know, when you're applying for these scholarships, you, you need some help in how you want to write it and what you want to put together. So I'll come back with a more detailed report over what Jack Kent Cooke. I think you'll really be impressed with it.
Thank you, Dr. Head. Any questions?
Yes, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, as Dr. Head, I just wanted to, I guess, to comment the question. And by the way, the answers are winning, five-three. So inside joke. The, one of the things that, that I'm very proud of Lone Star College and every, all the staff and administration was the ability to transition quickly last year because of pandemic. And a lot of people were surprised. I wasn't. A lot of folks were surprised how quickly we went into online courses. And in many instances, provide computers and all that. So, so proud of that. And I think we're ahead of a lot of folks, I can tell you that much. The, my, my, my question is, as, as we transition back to normal, to new normal, I guess, you know, it might seem like it's easy, you know, it's not simply flipping a switch, right? And, and really, a lot of things are going to change for good, which, which, which is important. Education, you know, has been redefined all the time, like the astronaut mentioned, redefining college education. The, and also, as, as you mentioned, how it's life-changing, right, college for many people. And we often talk about this around the table, some of the board members who attend a community college as well, probably give them opportunity to, 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 you know, get a career and all that. So my concern right now, and I want to make sure we're on top of this, is particularly a student that I know sign up for all the online courses. And of course, we had that discussion, I said, how important it is to go on campus and things like that. And so I was able to provide that advising, right, the personal. But how do we, how can we avoid some students making, perhaps not taking advantage of, of opportunities that you, you're able to get by being a campus, being involved? But, you know, talking one-on-one with professors, you know, teachers and staff. Although, it's similar to the question you mentioned earlier, also about you don't want students to get a lot of money if they don't have to. I mean, you have to make decisions and all that. But we want to be able, you know, sometimes they, they perhaps, they need some, some reason, some, some guidance in that area. And, and I don't know whether we're going to have any particular criteria or, or determine, how do we determine how much is too much for online and interaction and all that stuff? So just a general question, if, if we have an idea how we're going to impact the enrollment.
I was going to talk a little bit about that in May, what we see. But I, I'll tell you, we, we've actually have, we have sent surveys out to students at every campus, and we're getting the results of this. And I'll share that with you. I just got preliminary results yesterday. But I think the students are going to be dictating how we're going to handle this. And so, in other words, we know a number of them like online, but a number of them do not like online. So it's where, if we put the schedules together, again, we're moving, we're moving slowly this fall, right? We've, we've got a fifty percent, sort of, fifty percent online, twenty-five percent hybrid, and twenty-five percent face-to-face. Although, ask the presidents to, if somebody, and I've sent several loans out on this, if the faculty want to teach face-to-face, then do that. And, and, you know, so right now, it's May. I, I'm thinking that the full-timers can make decisions as they go through, and then we'll backfill some of these positions, our classes with adjuncts. The more people are vaccinated, and all this is, you know, we put the schedules together before May, before April, because of the way we do the registrations. And so the more vaccinations we get, I think the more people are going to feel confident about coming back. And I, you're right on. I, I think that that's the issue for us is what I want to be able to do, though, is if you want to take an online class, take an online class. And if you want to do a face-to-face class, then we'll make that available to you. So that's the balance that we're looking at right there. I, I'll know a little bit more as we get into the summer and see how the online classes are going, because the presidents have a green light to add additional classes face-to-face, if that's what the students want. So, really good question. That is, that is the issue with us going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any faculty, senate presidents, and announcements from them?
Yes, let me, I'm going to introduce Faye Lee, who is going to present a video, which I just think you're really going to enjoy. Again, this is a very positive upbeat thing. And Faye, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Once again, as I start the video, at the very bottom of the screen, you can expand it to make it larger, so you can see it better.
Wow, this is, that was really good.
Yeah.
That was really, really good.
It makes you appreciate and where you work when you see those students and those faculty. I have to tell you, it gives some meaning to what we do, right?
Absolutely. I'm really.
Really, I think we've all really missed that. When do we start meeting in face-to-face?
Whenever you're ready.
Well, I'm ready.
No, this is, I love that presentation. Thank you so much showing us that perspective. I mean, it was, it has been a very difficult year, obviously because of the pandemic. But I really, I think I can safely say that we all appreciate what you have done. And by you, I mean the Thalkis, the staff, everybody there at Lone Star for always fostering the importance of education and always, you know, taking care of our kids. So thank you. Thank you so much. Board members, would you like to share any comments or reports with us at this time? If not, I do want to, quickly, I just want to say thank you to Dr. Ryan and Elizabeth Bueno for inviting me to speak for the commencement speech at Houston North. It was one of their first commencement gigs there. So I just want to thank you so much for the opportunity and hopefully what I taped was a good inspiration to all the students to always succeed. And I just appreciate everybody and thank you so much for the opportunity. It's really nice. All right. Let's move to the consideration of the consent agenda. I think we are pulling out item number one or detailed discussion. Trustees, are there any other items that you would like for me to pull out at this time?
This is trustee Aris Wilson, number eight and number nine, please. Well, number eight, I just have a question on.
So eight and nine, right?
Thank you.
We're number four. We are, we are withdrawing that from the agenda for this. We'll bring it back in June with some corrected language.
Okay, so then we're pulling out item number four.
Right.
Okay. So we have one, eight and nine that we are going to consider separately. Any other items? All right, may I have a motion to approve items two, three, five, six, seven, ten, eleven, twelve, and fourteen. Second?
Second.
All right, it has been moved, approved and rightfully second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, agenda has been approved. Let's see, may I get a motion in a second to consider action item number one?
So move.
Second.
Second. All right, it's been moved and rightfully second. I think this belongs to Jennifer.
Ma, I just wanted her to explain, when we have these exceptions to the board policy, we'd like to explain those every time to you so that you know what the, what the issue is here. So Jennifer, if you would, please.
Hi, yes. Good afternoon, everyone. And number one, what that is doing is last March, the board did approve that we do a tuition and fee simplification, right? We had had tuition and then a long list of fees. And the board approved and we implemented it this past fall, 2020, where we eliminated almost all of our fees, but rolled it into tuition. So the goal there was to still be charging students effectively the same amount, just as a one tuition rate. It, an effect of that, that honestly, we had not anticipated at the time was that for dual credit students, we had been, the board policy says that we waive 100% of tuition, but not fees. So prior to this tuition simplification, we were charging students the fees, but not the tuition. Well, once we eliminated the fees and rolled it all into tuition, following board policy that says we waive 100% of tuition, that effectively changed what we would charge dual credit students from $26 a credit hour down to $2 a credit hour, which was not an intended change. So what we'd like to do here is just waive the board policy, allowing us to waive a percentage of tuition lower than 100%. The percentage we will just mathematically back into to get to the same per credit hour charge that we were charging prior to the tuition simplification. So that is the intent of this board agenda item.
Thank you, Jennifer. Board members, do we have any questions or comments on action item number one?
I have a question. This is David.
Yes, sir.
Do we have the, the authority to individually waive things like this? I mean, it's, it's in our policy. I'm just saying, do we have the, the authority to waive it on a temporary basis as opposed to going back and changing the policy?
I don't know. Melissa, is that something that we're able to do?
Yes, the board. So essentially what you're doing here is voting to approve a temporary variance to the current policy, which, which is permissible.
Okay.
All right. Any further comments? All right, all those in favor of item action one?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Right, motion passes. May I get a motion in a second to consider action item eight?
So move.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and rightfully second. Trustee Wilson?
Yes, I was just wondering, because this is for staples, for office supplies. And I wanted to know if I could get a copy of the comparison and how we came up with, with the results to staples. You know what I mean? To take in the contract.
Do you need like, are you asking for?
I need to see how, how it was chosen, how Staples was chosen. Because I know they did a, a study, the source will purchasing. So I wanted to see how they came up with Staples being the top and what were the, what were the, all the bids, I guess, to get the contract.
In the rationale, it says that we did a market analysis of the top 50 most frequently purchased items for the best value. Yes, we'll get you what, what you need. I may have Jennifer Ma reach out to you if that's okay, to make sure you're getting exactly what you need. Okay.
That, that, I just want to know how we, how we just, how it came with Staples and what other competitor was actually in the running to get, you know, get the contract.
Right. Yeah, that, that makes sense. We can do that.
All right, thank you, trustee Wilson. Hold us in favor, action item eight?
Aye.
Supposed? Motion passes. May I get a motion in a second to consider action item nine?
So move.
Second.
Thank you, trustee Wilson.
Yes, I see we have Yellowstone Landscaping Central listed. And yesterday, when I was listening to city council, their, their meeting and they were voting and they mentioned Yellowstone Landscaping as being someone who did illegal dumping on video. And I just want to make sure that we, before we grant contracts or, you know, continue to allow companies to get contracts, that we're making sure they're, they're abiding by keeping, you know, doing everything they need to do to make sure they, they're not doing anything illegal. Can I tag this until I get further information and talk to the council rep whose district they dumped in? Just to verify and to make sure, you know what I mean? This isn't like something that's been reoccurrence or is, was this just a one-time thing? Because I think when you are taking on this type of, you know, contract and project, you want to make sure that they're abiding by the law.
Okay, thank you, trustee Wilson. Are we able? Yes.
We don't have a tag rule. This isn't city council, so.
We don't have a tag rule. This isn't city council, so.
I understand it's not city council, but.
I understand, understand. Maybe board council can give us some proper terminology.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely. Since we have already opened up discussion on an item, the proper procedure would be a motion to postpone the item to the next board meeting. So you need a motion in a second and then you vote on the motion to postpone. And then depending on the outcome, you go back to the.
This is trustee Stone Ma, I make a motion to postpone the item to the next board meeting.
And I second.
I also second.
Okay. I got it rightfully first and a second that we postpone this for the next meeting.
And, and just a quick question, since this is my first time postponing, who do I need to report back the information to so that we can make sure we have that ready for the next meeting to vote on?
I think it might be Jennifer. I don't, Dr. Head.
Jennifer Ma.
Okay.
Did, did we vote on the motion to postpone?
We didn't vote, not yet.
All right, can I have a motion in a second to postpone action item action?
I think we've already got a motion.
We already have received the motion.
We just need to vote.
We see the vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Right, motion passes.
I'm chair, we can, I'll talk to Jennifer and to make sure, I think, in our legal counsel, to make sure that in our contract, we include provisions that would address the very issues that you're talking about. Trustee Wilson, I, I'm in agreement with you.
Thank you, sir.
I want to thank trustee Wilson for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody. Our next item is, let's see. Any financial reports?
Yes, good afternoon again. I have for everyone, the monthly financial report. And this is for the financial statements for month ended March 31st, 2021. So first showing you here our revenues. As of the end of March, we are at about 80%, 86% of our total budgeted revenues collected, which is 324 million. And actually, this is not even really, I could relatively similar to prior years. You can visually see that this is a percentage above prior year. So what this does indicate is that we are expecting revenues for the total year, if it continues this trend, to have a positive variance to budget, to exceed our budgeted revenues, which is what we're expecting because, right, our enrollment, our credit hours have done better than what we budgeted. We had budgeted for a 10% decline and instead here on average, we're at about a 4% decline. So I think it's, it is expected and this data really confirms that we are expecting revenues to exceed the amount that we budgeted for. If we could go to the next slide, please. And this slide shows our expenditure side again as of March 31st. Here we are at 52% of the amount of expenditures budgeted. And here again, compared to prior years, you can see that we are below where we've been in prior years. This is 194 million in actual expenditures. And again, the, this shows we are continuing to have a hiring freeze. The, the spending freeze we have eased up on slightly, but still everyone is being watchful of their expenditures. And so here in general, we are just still keeping sort of that tight watch on our budget to try to underspend our budget. Yes, so on this slide here, for the forecasted variance in revenues, we are estimating positive 9.1 million variance. And again, this is primarily due to the credit hours, but the change in this month's forecast from last month's, because I have been in prior months forecasting that positive variance due to credit hours. But the additional change this month is actually in state appropriations. You see the 3.9 million there. When we budgeted this year at, at the time, which was roughly this time last year, 2020, we were hearing that there was a possibility the state would reduce our appropriations this year by 5%. So we built that 5% into our budget, so that we were planning for it, which was the 3.9 million. At this point in time, it seems relatively certain that they are not going to reduce this year's appropriations by that 5%. Now, this is different than what they are currently determining in the legislature for what would be next year's appropriation. But our current year amount, we felt comfortable to forecast that we will not see that 5% reduction. So that is that positive variance of 3.9 million change in our revenues. Next slide, please. And here on the expenditure side, we are currently forecasting 7.6 million in lower expenditures. The significant change here from last month is we had budgeted for a $5 million COVID contingency account. Right, again, building this year's budget. This time last year, May 2020, at that point in time, CARES Act had passed, but we did not yet have CRISA or ARP. So just not knowing whether we would have these federal stimulus funds to cover COVID expenses, we budgeted a COVID contingency. But now that we have CRISA and ARP federal stimulus funds, we definitely have enough federal institutional grants to cover all of our COVID costs. So it was very confident for us to be able to forecast within our operating budget that we will not need to spend this $5 million in the budget. And that concludes my financial report and everyone also has available to them the building and grounds report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you and your staff for working on this. All right, our next item is suggested future agenda items. Trustees, are there any future agenda items that you would like to add? Hearing none. Before we adjourn, I want to congratulate Dr. Melissa Gonzalez for joining us. Lone Star College, Kingwood Campus. I don't know if you're here, but we want to thank you so much for joining us. We appreciate you and we look forward to working with you. It's, Dr. Head, is she here or?
She's very happy. I sent her a text message and said, I'll send you a contract. He's excited about joining us, very excited.
Yes.
He's been taking tours and working with Mario and to make sure we had a smooth transition there.
And also, thank you, Mario. I think you're here, so thank you so much for, you know, helping us with Kingwood. Thank you so much for your help and your patience. And I'd also like to say happy Mother's Day to all the moms out there at Lone Star College and board members. So happy Mother's Day. Thank you so much for joining us. We really appreciate you and it is 3:19 PM, so let's adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody. Bye.